During this moment of silence, please take a moment to reflect on the events that are happening around the world and how peace, kindness, and tolerance are needed for that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Agenda Item 4, Fire Evacuation Announcement. There is a fire exit directly behind everyone there. You can go out into the parking lot or the grass, or you can go out these exit doors over here and down the stairway and out to the parking lot. Okay, number five, Kathy Rollcall, please.
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Dr. Kalman?
Here.
Mrs. Kuschman?
Here.
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mr. Kovar?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Chairwoman Riley?
Here.
Okay, Agenda Item 6, Board Guests. Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you Chairwoman Riley. This is probably the most, getting off on a new term, this will be the most fun thing you do. We have a special announcement tonight that we're pleased to announce, our 2023-2024 Kid Mayor, Ms. Gabriela Diaz from Eli Whitney School. In this time, we're going to welcome Mr. Sine, our social studies coordinator, her teacher, Mrs. Zenzak, and anything else that the kid mayor would like to do, and she'll have another special guest when she's done presenting.
Just make sure that the red light's on.
Is that on? It's on, okay, perfect, okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Board Members, Mayor Nelson, Mr. Dreszek and Mr. Longi. It is such an honor to be here tonight to introduce Ms. Gabriela Diaz. Since mid-September, Gabby has been hard at work along with her classmates and fellow 5th graders from all across Enfield and our state, taking part in Connecticut's Kid Governor Program. Gabby will tell you more about the program, but I'd like to take a moment to thank you, the board, and our academic office, namely Ms. Middleton, Dr. Burr, and Mr. Sine, for giving our students the opportunity to participate in such an exciting and engaging program that highlights the importance of civic participation and giving back to one's community. I'd also like to thank our Principal, Mrs. Flanagan, and our Assistant Principal, Mr. Flynn, for all of the support they have provided the students and staff during this process. As you will see, Gabby is a wonderful representative to showcase the success of this program in Enfield. She's a 5th grade student from Eli Whitney School who comes to school each day, ready to tackle whatever is thrown her way. She's a kind, empathetic, and determined student, adored by staff and students alike, many of whom are here tonight to celebrate her. She holds a school job as a cafeteria helper, she's a member of our Math Olympiad team, and she has just begun to tutor 3rd grade students during intervention block. Gabby is also a member of our string orchestra, playing the cello, and in her time outside of school, she plays the piano, soccer, and takes dance classes. Gabby truly embodies our Whitney Pack values each and every day, and we could not be more proud of her. Joining Gabby tonight is her mom, Nisha, stepdad John, grandparents, Aunt Jill, Mrs. Flanagan, her principal, former and current teachers from Hazardville Memorial and Eli Whitney School, and friends watching here and from home. Without further ado, it is my great pleasure to introduce Enfield's next Kid Mayor, Ms. Gabriela Diaz.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Board Members, Mayor Nelson, Mr. Dreszek, Mr. Longi, and special guests. Thank you very much for having me. I would like to discuss with you about the Kid Governor Program. 5th graders in the state of Connecticut get to learn about government, voting, elections, and giving back to the community. In our classrooms, we discuss community issues, which are problems that we see in our town or state. My classmates and I each picked a topic that we thought needed to be changed. We researched the topic and came up with a three-point plan. Later on, we each wrote a speech that demonstrated our leadership qualities. We read our speeches to the class, then to the school, and finally, the town. I was lucky enough to be voted as the winner of our town. Now, if you will direct your attention toward the TV in front of you, I would like to share, I would like to share my speech with talks about my community issue and plan. Hello, my fellow 5th graders. My name is Gabriela Diaz, and I hope to be your next Kid Governor. My platform focuses on improving our school community by offering expanded mental health supports. A lot of students struggle with anxiety and depression and don't know how to cope with it, and oftentimes are afraid to tell anyone that they are struggling. Did you know that 5.6 kids, million, 5.6 million kids suffer with, suffer from anxiety? 4.2 million kids suffer with depression. 21.8 are living with behavioral issues? Mental health became a big problem during and after the pandemic. Kids were impacted the most when they were learning at home. With mental health cases increasing by 29%, every year more and more kids continue to suffer. If I were to be your next Kid Governor, numbers of mental health would decrease in our community. As 5th graders, we can come together in supporting me with three simple things. One, raise awareness for mental health. Two, bring therapy animals to Enfield Public Schools. Three, use flags as a communication tool. To raise awareness in our school community, we can all wear lime green or green pieces of clothing on October 10th, which is Mental Health Awareness Day. We can collect $1 or more and donate the money to an organization that supports kids and young adults that struggle with mental health, like NAMI and the Jedd Foundation. If I was given the opportunity to be your next Kid Governor, Parkman, Eli Whitney, JFK, Henry Barnard, Brutus Scrandall, and Enfield High will experience therapy animals coming to these schools to help support students who are struggling during school hours. Now, you may be thinking this is a great chance to get out of class and meet some cool new animals. However, we really need to practice empathy and compassion for our students who could really use the support so we all can become a better community. Some therapy animals that could come to our, to our Enfield Public Schools may include dogs, cats, guinea pigs, rabbits, and some types of birds. These animals are trained to provide comfort and support to students and can be a great addition to our education. Students will get a flag to communicate how they are feeling. This is what it looks like. Red says that I need help and I cannot keep working. Yellow says, I need help and I can, but I can keep working. And Green says, I'm working fine. This could also be used by a teacher, by teachers to determine if a student needs to visit a counselor, social worker, or visit the therapy animals. As you've heard so far, I am really committed to helping all of our students feel better when in school. This shows that I am empathetic, kind, and thoughtful. I am also responsible, respectful, and trustworthy. I think my teachers and parents can attest to that. These are qualities you would want in a leader because it shows that the leader cares about you and will do the right thing at all times. To conclude, mental health as well being is important for both the affected and non-affected. It is important that awareness increases among the society so the affected people feel more at home and are not forced to give their life away. Taking care of your mental health is an act of self-love. Always remember, there is no shame in seeking help for your mental health. If you vote for me for Kid Governor, I bet, I bet I can help your mental health improve. Just remember, you don't have to say yes to stress. Vote for me, Gabriela Diaz. Thank you for having me here tonight. It was a pleasure speaking with you all. I am proud to represent Enfield as the next Kid Mayor. I hope that during the year of my service, I can try to raise money and awareness for improving mental health among students in our district. At this time, I would be delighted to answer any questions you have.
That sounds awesome, Gabriela. That's so cool. So, does anybody have any questions or anything? Okay, all right, Dr. Kalman, go for it.
That was wonderful. That was an inspiring report, and I congratulate you on a job very well done. As it happens, we have our own Mental Health Committee here at the Board of Education that we're still in the process of forming. But I think the thing that most impressed me about your talk was that you said, "There is no shame in seeking help." And that has been a problem for so many years, that people thought it was a bad thing to have a problem, a mental health challenge, and now we're realizing that there should be no shame or stigma attached to that at all, that people should, who are suffering from mental health problems should be encouraged to talk to somebody, another student, or a teacher, or a professional about their problems. So I congratulate you on, on that incredible insight. And our Mental Health Committee may come knocking on your door for assistance and advice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda? I mean, Ms. Pickett?
Amanda's fine. Actually, I prefer that. Thank you so much, Gabby. I'm really excited about your platform, and I think we will probably be tapping into you as we start that committee that Dr. Kalman and Jean have been working on. I do have a question, because you mentioned this was your hard work, and you mentioned that classmates also participated, and I think some of the other schools do as well. I'm wondering, us as a board, how we might be able to hear about some of those issues and topics, and how that might be able to be used in our work? So I guess maybe it's a question for the adults, if there's some way that we could get a listing of topics. I think that would be interesting information for us to have.
So I can give a little, kind of a general overview of the scope of what we're talking about. So it's every 5th grade class that participates. As if you don't know how impressive Gabby is already, Gabby has gone through a classroom primary. Now, in her class, I think we had 11 students, in Mrs. Zenzak's class alone, run for the class primary. Then, of course, she won her school-wide primary against the other five classrooms at Whitney, and then went on to the district primary with representatives from each of the other intermediate schools. So, when I say there are dozens of platforms, it's probably reaching into the low hundreds of students that presented platforms that they wanted to see addressed, so.
My wonder is if there was some like, you know, trends or topics that like, kind of rose to the top as popular items, and how that might inform some of the work that we do. So this might be a future conversation.
Sure, absolutely.
I just think it's a neat project, and commend you on your hard work. We win one election, maybe two if we have a primary, and that doesn't happen often. So, really, really great job, and thank you to the staff that support it. So, classroom teachers, Mr. Sine, Ms. Burr, Ms. Middleton, really appreciate also the adult support and the family support, because it takes partnership. And your ideas also are creative. I love the idea of the color-coded cards, because I think classroom teachers that are in the audience could probably link that to instruction, and how that could be useful not only with accessing mental health supports, but academic supports as well. So I think you're an innovative thinker. I think we'll be tapping into you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Thank you so much. Your presentation was awesome. I loved every part of it. And I wanted to just note a couple of things. You know what else they use as therapy animals? Baby pigs and goats. Wouldn't that be cool? So keep those in mind, if you're the kid mayor. Piglets and goats. I think it's important to, what I like about your flag system is sometimes it's very hard to admit you're having some sort of an issue. You don't want to draw attention to yourself in class. Sometimes, too, that issue could be like a cyberbullying issue that nobody is really aware of, and you just want that safe space to have to talk to somebody. So I think having that, that flag system is a really helpful way to communicate to teachers, and a great way for teachers to be able to understand how that student is feeling. So I appreciate your out-of-the-box thinking on that. I appreciate your dedication to the well-being and the mental health of our students and our community. I think that's really important. Like you said, mental health really skyrocketed after COVID, and we have to do our best to support our friends in our school community and then in our, our town community. You did an excellent job, and I'm very proud of you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Genitis?
Well, congratulations on being Kid Governor. Oh, Kid Mayor. Well, that just messed my whole thing up here. Well, then anyway, since I misspoke and said Governor, in 2050, if you'd like to run for Governor, you'd probably have my vote.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kuschman?
I really appreciate you being here and sharing with us your ideas, and, I mean, mental health is something that our board talks about a lot, so just the fact that you addressed it in very creative ways was just beautifully done. I was curious about the card, the idea with the flags is such, is great. Do you foresee each student having their own set and being on their desk, or how do you foresee that being put into practice?
Yeah, so, each and every student will get a flag, and then, at the end of the year, the teacher will collect all of them again and then use them, use them the next year. And then, and then, any of the, if they have any school fundings, and if there are any broken, we, schools may be able to buy some more.
Okay. And in terms of the animals, do you, well, do you think that they're, how do you expect that would work in the sense that, would there be specific days they would be there? Or would they actually get to be there each and every school day, all day?
It would be specific days, maybe once a month, once a week. And they would visit the school, the schools that I had demonstrated in my presentation. And they would have a certain day of either the week or the month that the animals would go.
I think that will be everyone's favorite day to be at school. Just really, such really well-thought-out and real practical things to really help with the mental health. We really appreciate your, your presentation and glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Akri?
Congratulations, Gabby, on your appointment for Kid Mayor. It is great to see such motivation in you, like, you're, I appreciate your talent, intellect, your creativity for coming up with all these great ideas. Your musicianship, I love that part. The concept about you learning how to give back to the community. I am impressed, of course, with your campaign on the mental health awareness. As you know, Dr. Kalman and I have been working on that. Thank you for your caring and empathetic attitude. That's great. And I wish you all the best for the 23-24 school year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Kovar?
All right, so congrats. Thank you for coming out. I do just kind of want to get you to think out the, outside of the box for a second. I know in politics, a lot of times we focus on things that need improvement, or things that we want to focus, but I want to hit you with a question on the flip side. What do you think Enfield is doing right?
I think that Enfield is, if there is a kid that is having a, like, a day that is not their, like, a bad day, or they're just misbehaving in class, I think that, that those behavioral teachers and those school counselors and those social workers are doing a very great job with talking to them and asking them how they could make their day better, or asking them how their behavior could be better. And just having those teachers is making most kids and some kids at schools more, like, they're just, they, after they have that moment, most kids go back into school or go back to do their work and think about what the, what that teacher, what the behavioral teacher or their social worker or their school counselor said. And they'll put it into their minds, and they'll use it.
Okay, that's, that's awesome, and it's nice hearing encouraging things about our staff being proactive, stuff like that, so, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryder?
So first of all, I'm glad that the Kid Mayor is coming from Eli Whitney. Glad to have it back in our building. So, I'm, I'm proud of our Whitney Wolves. I did want to say, there's probably something in place now that you could expand on with the colors, that they do exist. There are some students with like a 504 plan, et cetera, and they do have, like, Post-it-sized cards that they have on the corner of their desks. So taking this to the next step and making it into a tent, if you will. We do have things like that in place here in Enfield Public Schools, and it does help some of our students that need it. So, I encourage you, Mrs. Zenzak, to look into that, and maybe that can help you with this application that you want to expand for our students. And again, congratulations. And my question for Mr. Sine is, what are the next steps? Because as you are our Kid Mayor, you do qualify to run for Kid Governor here in Connecticut, so I was wondering what the next steps in that process were.
So unfortunately, Gabby did not make it to the final election for Kid Governor. So Kid Mayor will be her role for the upcoming year.
Well, being our mayor is better than that, so. I just know there's steps to it. I didn't know, I didn't know what the next steps were. So, but again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I guess I'm last. So Gabriela, you are an amazing speaker. You, your voice didn't shake, you didn't hesitate, you, it was phenomenal. You are going places, for sure. I wouldn't be surprised if you end up in this seat and in the governor's seat someday. I had a question about the process. After you get elected in your school through all of the 5th grade classes, do you go to the other schools and meet up with the other kid governors and then, like, say your position at all the other schools, too? And is that how you get picked, that way?
So, we do a video of, so that was the video that was sent over to the other two schools that had the winning, the winning people for their school, and then the school went, went up against the town. And I just, that was the video I had shown you. The video I showed, I've shown you all is the video that was sent over to the other two schools.
That's awesome. You did a great video, too. I, like everybody else up here, said, you know, those cards are a really awesome idea to use in class. I mean, I think if any teachers are here, I think that's a pretty great idea. I mean, and even if, you know, we didn't have the, you know, ability to buy all of them, maybe the kids could make their own with their own pictures that would make them happy during the day. But I leave that up to you to pitch to everybody, because I think you're, you're a good saleswoman, too. But anyways, I would like you to come up here because myself and Mayor Nelson have something for you. Well, is this working? Okay, cool. So on behalf of Enfield Public Schools and Town of Enfield, we would like to present you with this plaque of being Enfield's 2023-24 Kid Mayor.
If we could have Mom come up and pin the Enfield pin on her. Raise your right hand. Do you promise to do the best for the Town of Enfield that you possibly can? Congratulations. You're our new Kid Mayor for 2024. There's a bag of goodies from the Town of Enfield. Don't show anybody. That's taxpayers' money. And I would like to formally invite you to the December 4th Town Council meeting as your first act as Kid Mayor, and give your whole speech to the Town Council, because I'm pretty sure some of us could use some mental health up there also. And also, the torchlight parade is Sunday night. We'd like you to walk with us, the council, and then the carols sing and help us light the Christmas tree, if that sounds good to you. I'm not as good of a speaker as you are, so there's not too much more I can say, except congratulations to your entire family. And you, you did a phenomenal job, and I am very proud to announce you as the 2024 Kid Mayor in Enfield. Congratulations.
Mayor Nelson, she has something for all of you as well.
Just to be clear, this is not a bribe, correct? I want everybody to know this. Thank you.
Gabriela, do you have any last words of encouragement?
Thank you, and everybody that's struggling out there, there is so much more time for you to get better, and there's always no shame in seeking for your men, there is no shame in seeking help for your mental health.
Well, I think after that, I mean, do we have to do anything else? That was pretty awesome. Okay, so, again, thank you for coming, and thank you for all the support for your students and your children. We really appreciate it. All right, so, moving on, number seven, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you Chairwoman Riley. Start with our student reps. Kayla, do you want to go first? Because you're the senior?
I'm still not used to being a senior. Okay, so we have a lot of exciting events coming up for after-school activities at Enfield High. We have our Rachel's Challenge Pancake Breakfast on December 16th from 8, oh my gosh, 8:30 to 11:30, I believe it is. Breakfast is free, so just come hang out. It'll be a lot of fun. And then Rachel's Challenge will also be passing out hot chocolates and cookies at the torchlight parade on Sunday, December 3rd at 6:00 PM. I believe will be set up on the town green, so come by and get a hot chocolate and help support. Our winter sports are beginning this week, excitingly. Hockey, wrestling, and basketball started yesterday, and indoor track will be starting on Thursday. Hockey has their first scrimmage this Friday at Twin Rinks. Track will have their first meet Saturday, the 15th, at Hill House in New Haven. Wrestling's first home meet is on December 13th. Girls' basketball's first home game is on January 5th. And boys' basketball's first home game is on December 19th. Model UN is participating in the Hartford Conference on December 1st and 2nd, this Friday and Saturday. And the PE department held a volleyball tournament last week in the days leading up to Thanksgiving, and it was a huge success, very much fun. I was on a team, and we participated, and it was a lot of fun, so, yeah.
Izzy?
Yeah, we've had a very busy calendar. On November 15th, EHS Honors Chorus did a festival, which they did amazing, as usual. So did the Lamplighters and Drama Club. They had their performance weekend opening night on November 17th for The Acts of Murder, which was also really good. I was there. NHS had their induction ceremony on November 9th, inducting 42 new members, which is a lot compared to last year. Last Wednesday, we had our Career Day, and Poetry Night is coming up on January 12th. Midterms for EHS students are on January 17th to the 23rd. December 7th, there is a chorus concert at 6:30. And then there's a band concert and jazz concert on December 13th, also starting at 6:30. Stay tuned for 1077 WACC this upcoming January. Enfield Youth Council members are doing an interview. Some job applications have been emailed to students at EHS with partnerships for ERFC, so if you or you or your child are looking for some jobs on the side, they have that. Cap and gown measurements for seniors on, on a third, on this Thursday. Cap and gown measurements for seniors on, on a third, on this Thursday during lunch waves are going to be available. Also this year, sophomore, the sophomore class will be in charge of door decorating with a prize of a Dunkin' Donuts gift card. And also PJ Day for all of Enfield District is December 8th this year, raising money for the Connecticut Children's Medical Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Izzy. As the adult mayor referenced when he was up here, enclosed in your packet is an invitation and information about the torchlight parade and carol sing. That will be held on Sunday, December 3rd, starting at 6:00 P.M. from the Enfield Street Elementary School. This event is another longtime tradition in Enfield that will end at the Town Green for a tree lighting ceremony. Students from Enfield High School Band will participate in the parade. Chorus students from all Enfield Public Schools will participate in the carol sing being, sing being held on the Town Green. Enclosed in your packet is information regarding 2023 PJ Day being held on Friday, December 8th. And again, thank Mr. Ryder for spearheading this school district-wide community benefit that helps out children at Connecticut Children's Hospital. There's a link posted on our website for any community member that also like to participate, and I'm sure Mr. Ryder will mention it during his remarks. As a reminder, that schools and offices will be dismissed early with lunch on Wednesday, December 6th, for staff to attend professional learning events in the afternoon. And I am going to not turn my back on the audience, but it's my fault. I want to publicly apologize to Alex for bringing him my computer five minutes before the meeting started and try to do this from down here. Okay, are we on here? Okay, so I apologize, Alex. Thank you, and I'm sorry. I thought it was as easy as plugging in, and I remembered the last time I did this, we had some technical challenges. So Chairwoman Riley had asked me briefly to start the conversation with this new board. There's been a lot of conversation. There's been a lot of information floating around there regarding the district's status as an alliance district and what that actually means. There's some misinterpretations at times. There's some people who have brought things to our attention that maybe don't necessarily line up. There's been comments made by some of you guys, but now is a good time to sort of reset the narrative on exactly what it means and what we're doing to address some of the things that the, that the alliance status designates as the district. Before we get into the alliance, we've done this with previous board members, so you guys have seen this before. But anyone who's new, we thought it was a good idea to sort of start here. Because you're going to hear a lot about this, that the state of Connecticut actually designates our students in essentially two categories. And you'll see that as during some of the performance metrics. And those categories are designated between all students and students that are classified as having high needs. And what does that mean for a student that has high needs? And it's basically made up of three factors. Factor one is a student's free and reduced lunch status. Factor two is a student with special needs, so if his child is special education or has an IEP. And the third factor is a student if they're classified under what's called ELL or if English isn't the student's primary language. Those three components essentially give you a number or a percentage on whether or not your students are designated as having high needs. I think we can all agree that students who are designated with high needs sometimes need additional or, or special resources. So that goes into play with a lot of the decisions that are made by the board, that are made by the administration, and ultimately that are made particularly come budget process. So there's two, this is all publicly available data. I didn't make this up. This is not mine. I don't own it. This comes from the state of Connecticut. It's on a place called EdSite. It's public. Anyone can go on there and see it. But just for a visual, I'll, I'll just warn everyone, this particular piece of EdSite is outdated, much to probably no one's surprise. If we had a kid governor, I'd ask her to fix it, but unfortunately, she's just kid mayor. They're, they usually lag with data output by a year or so. So the information I'm sharing with you is the most up-to-date, but unfortunately, it only dates back to 2021. But just to put in perspective, for those of you who are new to the board, when we talk about our students who have high needs, they're not just a dot on the screen. But if you look at the dots, you can see that those actually represent each of our schools. So, and if you hover over the dot, that will tell you what the makeup of, of that particular school is. So obviously, the largest dot on the screen is Enfield High School, and it shows you what the PPE is for school. That's per pupil expenditures. Every school is different because some schools are designated as Title I schools, Title II schools, Title IV schools. It shows the population, and this is again, this is all based in the 2021 school year. As you can see, enrollment, 1,500 kids. Percentage of EL, those are students where English is not their primary language. At Enfield High School during that year, it was 1.6. Free and reduced lunch was 39.7, about 40%. Special ed was 15%. So Enfield High School during that school year, our percentage of our kids that qualified as being designated with high needs was 46.5%, so roughly about 50%. We do know that that number is going to increase, and we know that because we have current years free and reduced lunch numbers. We know what our special education population has developed over the last two years, and we also track our ELL students. So even though it's unofficial until the state releases it, but this just puts in perspective when we're making references to what this means, so you can actually see it for yourself. Obviously, the next big dot, I'll just hover over them really quickly so people can get an understanding. Obviously, the next largest dot's JFK, and you can see it's 1,000 kids in that year. You'll notice that percentage of ELL students have gone up. So when you think about it realistically, your kids at Enfield High School, they're older. They might be more advanced in some of the interventions we put in to get kids up to speed when it comes to English as being their primary language. And as you see our grade levels decrease, you'll see that number increasing. But JFK during that school year, you could see the free and reduced lunch number was higher than it was at Enfield High, but the overall percentage of high needs was over 50%. So as Enfield High was a bit below, JFK was a bit higher. The larger dots start to represent our intermediate schools. So Eli Whitney in that particular year, again, highlighting the ELL numbers is obviously higher than it was at Enfield High, higher JFK, we're at 5.7%. Again, this was two years ago. And just going based on the percentage of high needs for Eli Whitney, 55.7%. When you look at, that's Henry Barnard. Sorry, trying to find the right one. Again, staying, staying with the theme of, of intermediate schools, Parkman School. Again, ELL is 4%, but our total number was about 53.7% of our students. So that's every other student in, in Parkman School in 2021 was qualified by the state of Connecticut as being a student of high needs. Again, just trying to blow through this a little quickly, Prudence Crandall. Obviously, those numbers are a bit higher. It was 356 students in, in enrollment during that year. Free and reduced lunch was almost 55%. Special ed was about 20, you know, near 20%. And the percentage of kids with high needs in Prudence Crandall for that school year was a little over 60%. So you can see the trend as our, as we look at the different grade levels. Again, Enfield Street School is about 51%, and you guys kind of get the point. This is all publicly available. We can send a link to you if you're interested. So I mentioned that because you're going to see that again. When you talk about, or we hear the term an alliance district, what does that mean? Essentially, in a nutshell, and I'm not going to go through every single indicator this evening, so relax. I also promised the Chairwoman we would do this briefly in, in a series of conversations with the board and the community. The Next Generation Accountability Index, you have an accountability index. It's essentially your score, right? So the state of Connecticut grades every school district, and every school district has a number or a score. That score is not just, is made up of 12 separate indicators. And you can see on the top of the tabs of where the indicators, I'll go through them briefly. I won't go through them in detail to give people an opportunity to, to prepare questions. Ultimately, those 12 indicators give you your accountability index or your accountability score. Some of the misperceptions, if you look at what the target line is, so on the left-hand side is the state of Connecticut, and on the right is Enfield. You through EdSite can do comparisons to any district you want, but for the purpose of this evening, I figured we would just start with the state, and then obviously, we want to look at what we did. If you look at what our Accountability Index score is, dating back as far as this goes, now, the Alliance Network was created in 2012. Data wasn't available until 2014. So the first readily available data we have on the Accountability Index was 2014. In 2014, the target for your accountability score was 85 or higher. And as you can see, we've never been there. And I don't say that with any great pride. I'm just simply stating facts. What that meant was at the creation of the Alliance Network in 2014, Enfield qualified. Our accountability score was a little bit higher than the state of Connecticut at 76.2, but still below the target of the state of Connecticut at 85. And it, what that meant was anyone under that target of 85 would have qualified as an alliance district. The reason we weren't named at that point is that the creation of the Alliance Network in 2012, the state only identified 30 districts. They took the top or bottom 30. We were not in the original 30. We were about 35, and we still are. So when you hear this, that, that term of, well, we just got into alliance district, we just got in because the state just expanded the network from the original 30. It's a five-year reevaluation plan. So in 2012, they named the original 30 based on the Accountability Index. They reevaluated in 2017. In 2017, the decision was to expand the network from 30 to 33. Again, we were 35. We didn't make that cut. Again, 2022, they're up for another five-year revaluation process. At that point, they decided, the state decided to expand the network from 33 to 36, with a caveat that the three new districts would not get the same funding mechanism that the original 30 and the original 33 had gotten. And the funding mechanism was the town's ECS calculation from 2012, when the network started, to that current year, which in our case was 2022, whatever that delta was between what you got as ECS in 2012 and what you received in ECS in 2022, which in our case was $1.4 million, that would be a carve-out of a designated alliance grant for the Enfield Public Schools. What that would mean for us as a community is, in rough numbers, the town of Enfield receives $29 million from the state of Connecticut in ECS funding. That's the state's share of paying for public education. When you're an alliance district, the state carves out that grant or that delta, which in our case is $1.4 million. The town only would receive 27.6. The Board of Education would receive directly $1.4 million. That money would then come directly to the Board of Ed. The town would not have access to those funding. What triggers the process once the funding is designated to that community is once we receive the funding or the funding is designated, we have a responsibility to create what's called an accountability plan, which in essence is we submit a plan to this Commissioner of Education that outlines what we plan on using that alliance grant for. We're giving you 1.4 million. What are you going to spend it on? And it better be tied into this, essentially. What happened in our case that made it unique in 2022, although we were designated, our look back through legislation for the three new districts, so the 34, 35, and 36, we got a separate look back of one year as opposed to the tenure that everyone else in the network had received. That one year resulted in looking at our ECS calculation from 2021 to 2022. And during those two fiscal years, the ECS calculation was flat, which in turn meant there is no delta, there is no grant, and therefore, you're not getting an alliance grant. And by default, because you don't have a grant, you're not required to submit a plan because the plan is really connected to what are you doing with the funding. So we've heard, I've heard questions about where's the plan. We had a plan because when we were notified in February of 2022 that we were going to be a district, we're preparers by nature, and this, everyone in the network's plans are public. So we have an idea as to what the plan should look like because ultimately, you as a Board of Education do not approve the plan. We have, I have a responsibility to submit the plan. The plan is subject to the approval of the Commissioner of Education. Once the Commissioner signs off on it, then it gets presented to the Board of Education as our alliance plan. We never got that far because without a grant, there's no plan that's necessary. And the Commissioner had, the State Department of Education said, you have no responsibilities other than you're in. We then, as a district, had developed what we were planning on presenting to the Commissioner in that July, in that first year, but because of the change in the legislation and the no grant, we weren't required to formally present that. We did not have the funding to do some of the things that we wanted to do to start addressing some of these indicators, but we have since started implementing some things on our own to address this. So the previous board members are, are familiar with our instructional coaches at the elementary level. That was something, and if you look at other districts' alliance plans, and they're all publicly available, that will be familiar. I didn't, we didn't make it up, but we knew that that was something that was beneficial for our kids. It was beneficial for our staff. It was beneficial to start moving the needle on, from, from performance standard. So we found a way to do it internally on our own without asking the taxpayers for more money, with the hope that at some point through the legislative process, this will get rectified. As it stands today, these are the facts and what got us to this point and why we are here. You can see what the numbers are. I will briefly take you, and I promised Chairwoman Riley that I would just say what they are and move. Everyone thinks it's just test scores. If you look at indicator one, that is test scores. That is the test score component of this. I will just highlight briefly because I know there's a lot of people that, I don't know if they're still behind me. There's a lot of people in this community that have moved a lot of mountains for this little blip. Because one thing that you can look at consistently that we're aware of, and I want to kind of point out the, the access when you look at the dates, you know, this started in 2020, in 2014. If you look at 2017, 2018, that's when I owned it. 2018, 2019 was the first year we started making some changes to move. And then there's a gap between 2019 and 2022. And we all know what happened during that timeframe. That's the COVID years. That's the years when the state didn't, we didn't do standardized testing. There was no metrics. We weren't responsible for reporting data to the state. We knew in 21, 22, when those numbers came in, we needed to reset the bar. Because and I, we've said this since the early days of the pandemic. We sent our kids home. We don't know what we're getting back. And I think, if you don't want to believe me, I think it was much better articulated by our new kid mayor as to what our kids went through during that period of time. This isn't someone's fault. Nobody did anything wrong. It's what the world that got dropped on our lap was. So we knew when that numbers, when those numbers came back, and you can look, and it's the reason I keep the state on there, it happened everywhere. We all knew this. That's why they didn't keep scores. I will just highlight, because I, I'm not going, I'll share with what, what the Chairwoman asked me to do. I just wanted to highlight that going into last school year, when these numbers came in, looking from 21 to 22, our test scores and every, and one more thing I need to step back. The categories, if you look on the color code at the top, you'll see there's ELA, all students, ELA, students with high needs, which is why I started where I did. The state designates your performance broken out by all students and students with high needs. And if the more students you have with high needs, if that percentage of students grows, that's going to alter your performance for all students because our students with high needs may require additional resources and material. You'll see there's three categories, ELA, math, and science. Each category is broken down between all students and students with high needs. I'm very proud of the people behind us and the people that are out there watching in YouTube land and the people who are watching that probably will watch tomorrow morning when they, hopefully, they're sleeping because they've got kids coming in tomorrow morning. Every one of our disciplines for all of our kids, not just all kids, including our kids with high needs. Every metric went up last year. So what we are doing is working. Is it working at the pace that we want it to? No. Are we where we need to be? No. But the directive that I gave this district, when the dust settled, was we need to move the needle. The, the past few years are behind us, and, and they did, and we listened to them, and it's, and it's working. This is the momentum that we need to build on. I'll blow through the other ones pretty quickly. The next one is, is growth, and there's definitions for that, and it takes too long for me to explain it. It's not just test scores. Chronic absenteeism is, is one of the indicators. College and career readiness is an indicator. On track for high school graduation between all students, four-year cohorts, and six-years students with high needs is an indicator. Post-secondary entrance is an indicator. Physical fitness is an indicator. And arts access is an indicator. All of those combined scores are what give you your number. We knew this year this number was going to go down because in one of these indicators, there's more than one indicator, as your test scores go up, more than one indicator, as your test scores go up, some of your growth performance expectations also increase, which means your numbers go down. We can explain that in more detail as we get into it, but I'm not going to do it. At this point, I think it's a good opportunity that if the Board wishes, and the Chairwoman had expressed this desire, that we start having these conversations in this forum, indicator by indicator, with those who are actually behind the work that got in here, and bringing the staff members, and not just central office administrators, but our staff members on the ground that can show you, this is what it means, this is what we did, and more importantly, this is what we're doing now to continue to grow. So I said I would do the overall, general overview of it. I had to include the first part, so that we can just keep it in context, but if anyone goes back and says, this just happened overnight, or this happened in 2022, the reality is, it's been there since, since its onset. And we can sit here and discuss how we got to that point. I, I think, like I heard from a lot of you last, last time you guys met, which was last week, was, I'm more interested in how we do, how we address this going further to better suit the needs of our kids, and to move this place forward. So with that, I will yield back the rest of my time. I just felt like I could say that. I'd never get to sit up here. And that will conclude the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Drazek. All right, so I'm going to move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Audiences. So it's a new, well, it's a regrouping of the Board. So I wanted to start off, I'm going to try to, I'm going to give everybody four minutes to speak, and I'm going to try to keep that, I would like to keep that consistent across the Board going forward. But I'd also like to say that the bylaws of the Board, we have bylaws for audiences, and so I would just like to say, the bylaws of the Board say, during this period, any resident or taxpayer of Enfield, employee of the Board, or citizen with an interest in our school system may address the Board on issues concerning the school. When addressing the Board, the member of the audience will state their name and address, refrain from making personal attacks on individuals. Since the Board meetings are held to conduct the Board's business in public and are not meetings with the public, the Chair, acting on behalf of the Board, has the right to limit the overall length of time devoted to the audience's participation, and/or the length of time individuals may spend when addressing the Board. Hence the four minutes. So first on the list is Kelsey McGuire Bruce.
First, I just wanted to congratulate you, Mrs. Riley, on being Chairwoman, and commend you and Mrs. LeBlanc for your act last week. I thought that was wonderful. I'm here tonight as an Enfield Public School teacher, a lifelong Enfield resident.
I don't want to, hold on.
Oh, my name, address. Kelsey McGuire Bruce, 63 Neelens Road. Sorry. I am here tonight as an Enfield Public School teacher, a lifelong Enfield resident, and an active community member, and a mother of two future EPS students. Anyone who knows me knows how much I love this town, and I cannot give up on Enfield, not yet anyways, so here I am tonight. Tonight, I want to make sure that all of you up here understand that the only path to take at this point is one that moves us forward, forward to a brighter future for EPS, not backwards to the past. A path that moves us forward is one that looks at issues such as teacher retention, and questions how we can retain high-quality educators in this town. A path that moves us forward is one that acknowledges that the makeup of our town has changed, and the needs of our students have changed with it. A path forward is one that is working to find a way to meet the needs of our current students. A path that moves us forward supports not only the needs inside of the schools, but the buildings themselves. A path that moves us forward can be summed up in one word, and that word is support. Our school buildings need support. We can start by moving forward with the K-25 Modernization Plans. Teachers need to feel supported by the community, by our administrators, by our colleagues, and by our students' families. Our students need to be supported by a budget that increases, not maintains. A budget that increases student programming, increases staffing, increases resources, and advances our curriculum and course offerings. You as elected Board of Ed members need to show your support, support for all Enfield Public School buildings, families, staff, and students. A path forward is more than just words, it's actions. A path forward lets go of the past and works to build a better future. I look forward to seeing all of you help move Enfield Public Schools forward, and therefore, Enfield as a town. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. All right, next up is Ryan, oh boy, Shuetsch?
Shuts.
Shuts, sorry. I'm never good at these things.
Ryan Shuts, 106 Church Street. Good evening. I'd like to start by congratulating all of you. It's my hope we can set our differences aside and focus on what these kids really need, which is an education. I could sit up here and point out the hypocrisy said at the last meeting, but at the end of the day, it's in the past. Let's focus on right here and now. Our number-one concern should be, what can be done to get us out of this Alliance District? One concerning thing that's been said from Board and Town Council members is, we fear for our children and what these next two years will bring. Can you please elaborate? This fear makes me wonder, should I have any cause for concern for my child? And yes, my child is in the school system. So if anyone could please elaborate on this fear, it would help me put my mind at ease. At the end of the day, I truly hope you all can unify for our children. I look forward to see, seeing what all you can accomplish. Thank you. And I also want to congratulate Gabby. She did a really awesome job. Thank you.
All right, Ryan Moore, can you come up next?
Good evening.
Hold on, I wanted to make sure you get your four.
What color is it?
It's off. Okay, we're good. Okay, all right. Ryan Moore, you are up, sir.
All right. Good evening. My name is Ryan Moore, and I'm not going to state my address for the record, and here's why. The BOE policies state that you're supposed to state your address for the record. Connecticut General Statute's Open Records Act says there can be no preconditions upon which participation is required. So not only are your policies in conflict, in contravention with the general statutes, I have no problem giving my address, I bet you everybody here knows it by heart, but as, as an act of protest against statutes that are unfair, and that have been distributed unfairly and unequally to the residents of this town, I'm not going to state my address, because I don't need to. And I think that you should have your policies come into alignment with general statutes, yes.
I would like to just stop you there for a minute. I want you to have all the time to talk. I'm just going by what we have in our bylaws of the Board right now, and that's not to say that we aren't going to be going over them and making sure that they're completely, you know, up to date, and maybe things will even change, but I would ask that until we can revisit these bylaws, that you would please follow them.
So I'm not going to state, it's up to you whether or not you take my time from me, but I would say that I'm not going to state it, because that's my right to not have to state it. And I'm sorry, but unless people stand up for their rights, then their rights get stripped from them. And that's, we've seen that happen here before, right? We saw Mrs. LeBlanc allow certain people to use the JFK address, and I tried to protest kind of silently.
He already got in his four minutes.
Excuse me?
Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore, I'm.
Okay, so since you interrupted, am I going to get my time back?
Yeah, I stopped your time.
This is my time. Thank you very much. Okay, so we've seen that that's been distributed unequally, right? So certain people can use the JFK address, but when I tried to do it in a very kind of, kind of mediocre way, to not, to not call attention to it, use the JFK address to say, it needs to be, if you're going to have a policy, which that's not in the policy, is it, Tina? Even though you've misrepresented that, it's not in the policy, that certain people can use the JFK address, and certain other people can't. So that, none of this, and that, here's my point. I think that moving forward, I hope this Board does treat everyone equally and fairly, and I hope there is, in all the, that's just one policy, right? That's not being dispensed fairly, okay? I hope you guys will take the policies that are in contravention to the general statutes, and unconstitutional, the things that, so here's another example. That could have cost this town tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe, okay? We had certain people come up here and pin our Superintendent, right? Not a part of, not, not on the agenda, but they can pin the Superintendent and sing his praises. We had other people come up here, and they want to make claims that the Superintendent is doing certain things that are wrong, and certain people find that offensive. So that person gets shut down. That's a textbook case, open and shut, of viewpoint discrimination. Textbook. So if someone wanted to sue for that, they could have sued, and that would cost the town thousands and thousands of dollars. So I hope that this Board, moving forward, can correct the policies and, and actually address the things that have happened in the past. Thank you for pointing out the things that have happened with Pizza Gate. There needs to be an address of the root cause of what's happening, because that wasn't the first assignment that was in this school. And we were talking for years about the test scores before the Alliance District came out. So I hope there will be a rectification of looking at the past and actually fixing the policies that have led us here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Could I have William Delaney come up, please?
Bill Delaney, JFK Middle School. I won't say the number. I won't say the street name. And I was in a really good mood before that. That kid mayor got to me. I wasn't going to throw my fastball, throw my change up.
Mr. Delaney?
Yes.
Can you state your address, please, for the record? I'm just going to have to ask everybody.
In a different town. I live in South Windsor. I can state my address if you'd like.
Yes, just for the.
Okay, 25 Haystack Lane in South Windsor.
Thank you.
So good evening to our returning champions and our newly-elected Board members. It was a hard-fought election, and this is American democracy in action. That's what happens. My hopes for the Board, for this Board, is that you can work together and function in things that matter, important things that have to do with the kids. I think the theme of tonight's conversations has been moving forward. With that said, it's not to just, I mean, I'm a history teacher. I don't want to disregard the past. But there is a point where things become counterproductive and without meaning and repetitive. I think the, the Pizza Gate scandal, per se, that was a disgusting assignment. We all know that. This was a colossal lack of judgment. We all know that. But let's move forward. This, if, if you want a real morale killer, keep rehashing that. I mean, certain people are pushed over the edge, and I'm talking about people, you know, in, you know, propaganda sites, that will be pushed over the edge with this kind of a conversation, with this kind of insightful language that is used. We have to be careful. Language matters. Masks, please. Like, we have to get over that. Mr. Genitis, may I address a Board member personally like that, or do you just want a general? Okay.
He can't respond anyways.
No, I know that. I know you've, people on the Board have mentioned that out-of-town employees should not be able to speak at meetings, perhaps directed at me. Isn't that cancel culture? I would say.
Mr. Delaney.
I mean, there's hundreds of, yes.
You just have 30 seconds, one delay.
Oh. There's hundreds of town employees that don't live in Enfield, and to silence them just would be wrong. Just a definite lack of respect that has been shown towards teachers by certain people.
Mr. Delaney, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Hopefully, I'll be back.
Thank you. Next up is Maureen Griffith.
Maureen Griffin, 98 Abbey Road. Gabby? She's one of Mrs. Zenzic's students. I'm not surprised she's so great. I've seen her in action. When she was talking about, when you asked what was good in the schools, and she was talking about behavior texts, teachers, counselors, the supports available, that's all social emotional learning supports. That's what the kids need. She's telling you, that's what works, to support her classmates that are struggling. I believe the first Ryan, wondering what the fears were, from having children in the schools at different levels. I would say that, in hearing their discussions, it's a fear that only kids that fit in a limited mold will get the supports that they need. The other Ryan, how does the address question move forward the good of our students? Okay, now onto what I actually came here to say. Anyone who's heard me talk before will know that I was hoping that it would remain a Democratic majority. Prior to last week, I was thinking, all right, I've heard, and, you know, prior Board members speak, I've heard people speak from here, so I've got an idea of the outlook of most of the people up there, and in my mind, there was two wild cards. One proved, with comments last week, no longer a wild card in my mind, because looking squarely out the rear window of the bus. Madam Chair, I still consider you a wild card. I love what you said about each child needs, their specific independent needs need to be taken care of. And I hope that we can all move forward and do that. Ms. Akri? Yeah, it's Akri, I got it. You and I have talked many times. I have the utmost respect for you, and honestly, I think you're the most important person up there right now, out of everyone, no matter what your party is. up there right now, out of everyone, no matter what your party is, because you are a good listener. You are empathetic. You, you and I, we don't agree on everything, but we can talk and listen and build on that. And that's what is needed by all of you. And I think if you can all, like I used to say, look at Jonathan. In my mind, you're the new Jonathan. You are the model of what we need. And you respect everybody, and you treat everyone with respect. And the work that you're doing with Dr. Callen, sorry, on the mental health, and your experience of so many years in the Springfield District, you understand, you have seen the realities of how what a child is facing at home impacts them in the school, and how it's not just pull up your bootstraps. Well, if you've never seen a pair of boots, how the hell do you pull up the straps? So I have a lot on your shoulders. I hope you carry it well. I have confidence that you will. On another thing, the PJ Day was mentioned. I look forward to seeing pictures of Mr. Dreszek and Mr. Longy taking part in it. And another question about...
You have 30 seconds left.
The equitable ECS funding, where, how it fell by the, how we only got a one-year look back. I'd love to hear from our state reps how that happened, because they should have been on that and fighting for us. They dropped the ball. Thanks. Bye. Talk to you next time.
Thank you. With that, public communication is closed. Okay, so next up on the agenda is number eight, board members' comments. I'm going to go back and forth again, if that's okay. So Dr. Callen, if you have anything?
Yes, the Kite report. First of all, school readiness. All 28 slots have been filled at ECDC. Am I...
You're good.
Okay. Staffing is becoming a challenge at ECDC. It appeared that hours would have to be reduced from the usual 6:30 to 5:30 to 8 to 5. And accommodations have been made for families affected, but adequate staffing may prove to be a challenging, a challenge moving forward. Reverend Ling, a guest speaker at the last Kite meeting, talked about the impact of gun violence on children. In addition, a presentation was given by Laney La Bruin from the Enfield Food Shelf. She emphasized the importance of removing the stigma of food assistance and encouraging families to seek assistance when the need arises. Regarding the Kite budget, expenditures were $12,839 in August and $13,415 in September. As you may recall, Sparkler is an app that provides for universal developmental and social emotional screening of infants and toddlers. It is truly a revolution in identifying children with challenges in these domains. But ironically, pediatric practices have been slow in adopting it. In fact, only a few practices throughout Connecticut are using this Sparkler. However, the Enfield Family Resource Center has approached one Enfield practice and will soon be training its staff in the use of this app. And so Enfield, this was quite an advance for Enfield leading the way in terms of new technology for screening. Enfield was well represented at the annual Sparkler Conference last month, sponsored by the OEC. The Parent Leadership Academy is accepting applications and will hold its first class on February 3rd. Parent ambassadors met on October 11th and discussed such challenges as childcare and changes in age of entry into kindergarten, as well as the draft prepared by the Blue Ribbon Panel on Childcare under the auspices of the Office of Early Childhood. The three-to-three committee met in October, and their goals for the upcoming year are to create a listserv for early childhood education centers and to address equity in the transition to kindergarten initiative. The latest first readers ceremony of the year was held yesterday, I believe, at Enfield High School. Another first readers trivia night will be held on February 24th at Mount Carmel. The first fire truck delivery of books to schoolchildren is to be held before the holiday break, but I don't have any further details about this yet, and hopefully I will by the next Board of Education meeting. Rocking Share Readers is a program involving our senior citizens reading to young children, and it has started up again, but is in need of volunteers. Members of the committee volunteer to read to young children, schoolchildren, for half an hour each session, and it's a great way to bridge the generational divide. So please contact Michelle Zaug at Kite if you are interested in participating. Two Gen will be sponsoring a breakfast for community business leaders to discuss employee childcare issues. The breakfast will be held on January 11th, and the CEO of CBIA will be in attendance and will speak. Brianna Beckstrom, the Director of Enfield Kite, attended the National Business Leaders in Action Summit in Colorado a few weeks ago to participate in discussions related to childcare. So we are very honored that Brianna was able to represent our community at this conference. With respect to Head Start, the Policy Committee met on November 1st to review and vote on the Department of Health and Human Services baseline grant applications for 2024 to 2029. The grants include $1,072,678 for engagement of 102 children at Head Start and an additional $11,241 for training and technical assistance. The non-federal share amounts to $480,952. There are four enumerated goals, and for each goal, there are corresponding outcomes, anticipated challenges, action steps, and progress tracking. And I'll only mention the four goals. Goal number one, to elevate and sustain systems and processes through access to resources and connections in the community that empower families. Goal two, engage all stakeholders in coming to a collective investment in personal and professional growth. Goal three, enhance equity by creating an environment where all are welcomed, accepted, respected, and supported. And finally, goal four, school readiness progress across developmental domains, including language and literacy development, cognition, approaches to learning, physical well-being and development, social emotional development, and mathematics will be monitored three times per program year. Once the Policy Committee voted to approve the application, it has been forwarded to the Board of Education for its consideration, and I believe, Chris, we will be discussing that shortly. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Callen. Phil, Mr. Kovar, you're up next.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just some brief comments today. So members of the board and myself, we received a couple of emails last week regarding BOE members or member not having contact with their children. The only thing I just want to kind of address and inform the public is what we do and what we don't do as a board. What we do is we are a governing body that goes over policy and planning. What we don't do is sit in a classroom as educators. So that's, just kind of want to put that on the record in regards to those concerns. I know as a, myself and our caucus, I know I reached out to leadership regarding getting the Policy Committee going. I believe one of the other members will talk more about that. But I just want to keep the public aware that we are, as we said last minute, we want to hit the ground running. Looking through our bylaws, a lot of our amendments or updates to policies do require going through to regular meetings. So once they come out of committee, you're going to be hearing things a couple of times before we get to vote on them as a full board. But I look forward to making those recommendations and getting them before everybody. This is just a question through the chair to the superintendent. Something I'm noticing as a parent is we, I'm getting the perception we have a lot of staff professional learning events just in the last two weeks. I think the kids had a half-day Monday, a half-day Wednesday, and another half-day Wednesday. So that being said, I'm interested in finding more information about how many hours in the school year the staff spends doing this professional learning? What are the topics, themes? I'd like to see an agenda and itinerary. I'd like to know, are they mandatory or are they optional for staff? And are these professional learnings? Is it a local initiative? Is it mandated by the state, federal government, so on and so forth? So again, through the chair to the superintendent, if I could get some more insight on that, either for myself and/or the whole board. To keep everyone up to speed, I also did send a few other requests to the superintendent's office. I know they're pending research and response. These all relate to student enrollment, school year, gains, losses, retention, attrition, graduation rates, and then staff size, composite and longevity. This is going to tie into what we were talking about with the Alliance District statistics. And also, I believe one of our speakers talked about retaining quality staff. So I'd like to know, are we retaining staff? Are we losing staff? I know it is kind of a little legwork for the superintendent's office. I know for those of you that are familiar with the corporate and business world, a lot of times we look at five-year patterns. That was kind of the number I was going to throw out there, but then realizing we had a two-year pandemic, I think we need to at least kind of look going back seven years. So that's just kind of looped the public in on some of my requests. The only other question, and again, this might, this was inspired by the kid mayor, but through the chair to the superintendent, mentioning the idea of emotional, like, support animals or comfort animals. And I'd like to know, is that a practice that we're currently doing? I know, like, a lot of times you see in the news if there's like a traumatic event at a school that get brought in, but is that something that we do in Enfield? And if not, can we look into that? So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Mrs. Pickett?
Thank you. First, thank you, Chris, for reviewing Alliance District information. Again, I know that's information that you have reviewed multiple times, and we've gotten that publicly, but I appreciate you, again, sharing EdSite. I would encourage you, Mr. Kovar, to check out that website that is all publicly available data that our district reports to the state, where you can compare data, all those look backs, you can disaggregate the data. All of that information is publicly available for you to consume. I want to share that, like you, Mr. Schultz, I have been concerned about Enfield's academic performance before even becoming a board member. I used to come here as a parent and ask a lot about what was happening. And so I think sharing the data that was shared tonight, this isn't a new problem. This has been an issue for Enfield for over 10 years. I do want to say that I don't want to place any shame, blame, or guilt on any of our high needs students or families. So we reviewed those categories, but personally, for me, I think it's really important that we do not blame those specific students or families, because if we actually compared our non-high need to our high need students, the data is not that drastically different. So there are tier-one concerns and issues that we need to address. And I think if you look back at previous board meetings through our curriculum subcommittee, we have been having discussions about our reading curriculum, our instructional coaches, how we're supporting our academics, the pathways and the works that we're doing at the high school to make sure that opportunities are available to our students. So I will continue to inquire about how we are supporting the curriculum and the academic needs of our students moving forward. I want to thank you, Ms. McQuire-Bruce, for your comments. I came tonight with some comments prepared, and one of them was about our commitment as a board to our buildings and our facilities. So I see we have an agenda item later on tonight to discuss some of the projects on our buildings, and I am interested on the impact on our school modernization efforts and what our long-term vision and work is for that. I do want to take a moment to address some bus and safety concerns that have been brought to my attention and I see as a parent, especially in our elementary school buildings. Parkman, there is a small driveway that buses can come up and turn around, and if there are cars parked up there, it becomes a traffic jam on Weemath. So I'm not sure if there's a way we can support the school or some enforcement of no cars parking up front, but that is a concern. I know JFK, that's a nice new building, but I think there's still some parking issues there, as well as parents are parking in many neighborhoods, because that pickup line is atrocious. So I wonder about, you know, as we are moving forward with school modernization thoughts and things like that, how can we ensure that the safety patterns of our buildings and parking lots work for flow of traffic? So that might be something we want to address. Phil, based on your last comments, I'm interested to think, to hear about your policy proposals. We all have a lot of ideas and things that we want to address during this term, but I'm going to encourage us to pause. Where are these priorities coming from? Are they our own beliefs about education? Are they rooted in evidence or educational best practice? Have our students or our certified educators been solicited in their feedback? I've been consistently vocal about wanting to get more meaningful ways to engage our staff, our students, and our families in our decision-making as us as a board. I've talked about that in curriculum meetings. I've talked about that up here. I asked about how we can get information from our kid mayor work. I think we have work to do about how we can solicit meaningful feedback from those that our policies and our practices impact most and know more about education than we do. We must ensure that we are understanding the experience and the needs of our students and our staff. I want to take a moment. Last night, I got my haircut at A Salon on Skidico, by Skidico Duncan. My hair was cut by a recent Enfield High graduate. She said I could share her name. Her name is Genesis. For 45 minutes, she went on and told me about the amazing staff and opportunities she had at Enfield High, how she would not be cutting hair, paying her own bills, having her own place to live if it wasn't for some of our deans, an amazing science teacher she spoke of, and so many other educators in our schools. I think it's that feedback that we need to hear more of. I think it's Gabby's feedback that we need to hear more of. Many of the students in our schools do not have our life experiences, and hearing how we can support them is really important. I'm going to end with a couple of school updates. Enfield Street School, there was a beautiful Veterans Day assembly. My father participated. I want to thank Ms. Sam Gupta. She is the, some big shoes were left at Enfield Street School. But Ms. Sam Gupta, I call her like the climate and culture of the building. She can get that whole school community together. And my dad came home in tears again. So thank you to her hard work and Enfield Street School's honoring of their veterans. There is a book fair until the 30th. The Square One fundraiser is ending, and there are some upcoming fundraisers for Enfield Street. Parkman, as a mom, I have been attending the ROAR assemblies. I am impressed about student leadership in those assemblies and what's happening at that school. The third-grade mini-me contest, pumpkin mini-me contest, happened. I might be a really proud mom. My son did win for his classroom, but that was an amazing opportunity for us board members to participate in. And I really want to thank our PTO. They, I don't know, I think it's a full-time job that they do, the amount of activities that they plan. So please, families, check out your principal newsletters. There are many activities coming up and opportunities to support your PTO, Monster Jam tickets, Harlem Globetrotters, restaurant fundraisers. You mentioned the half-days. There were conferences, actually, that happened, so they weren't all PD days. I want to thank our staff and encourage families to continue to communicate with your teachers. There was some really great conversation, and staff work very long hours on conference nights, and I appreciate them taking the time to do that. Two last updates. I was able to participate in Career Day. I want to thank Ms. Wexler and her students. I really enjoyed my time with them, talking a little bit about what I do professionally, but also to hear from them. And I want to plug the artisan market that happens at the old Nathan Hale School on Saturdays and Sundays from 10 to 3:00. So many local businesses are there. They're doing this until, through the holidays, and I encourage folks to check it out. Thanks.
Ms. Akri?
Good evening, everyone. From the desk of Andrew DePere at Prudence Crandall. He says, "Last week, Crandall held its second annual family engagement day. We had over 270 students and their families represented. Parents, caregivers, and guardians took part in an activity with their children. We also had 15 different community organizations represented, handing out information to the families. Over the month of December, diversity and culture, by learning about all the different winter celebrations, teachers will be planning and researching, discussing with students on each of those celebrations." Other important dates for Crandall. Crandall will have Literacy Numeracy Night Book Swap. Crandall is looking for greatly, I'm sorry, gently-used books for a book swap during their Literacy Numeracy Night, which will be on Wednesday, January 24th, 2024. Of course, the snow date is the next night, January 25th. If interested, please send your child to school with one gently-used book, which can be dropped off in the front of the main office of the school. And the last date to donate a book will be Wednesday, January 17th. Of course, the PJ Day is Friday, December 8th, as it is for the district. Of course, the PJ Day is Friday, December 8, as it is for the district. This is important for the diversity and inclusion, what he was talking about with the December celebrations. On December 7, Crandall is celebrating, "I Have a Little Dradel Day." Wear blue to celebrate the festival of Hanukkah. And another important date, Crandall Barnard PTO meeting, is on December 19 at 6:00 p.m., and it's virtually on Zoom. And I would like to thank Ms. Griffin for your encouragement and your support. Thank you.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes, thank you. I heard from Lori Gates, and she asked me to let the community know that the 2023 totals for Cookies for Camouflage were 13 addresses, including five ships. 101 boxes were shipped containing 854 pounds of cookies and cards. The postage was $2,390.25 in postage, and everything was covered by donations. So thank you to the Enfield community and everyone who participated in Cookies for Camouflage. And again, she does never want us to thank her, but thank you to Lori Gates for arranging that every year. EHS Safe Grad is having their Jingle Jam auction on December 12. There's going to be a live auction, a silent auction, raffle tickets. It's $20 for one ticket to get in or $35 for two. All that information can be found on PTO, enfieldpto.com. I also attended Career Day. I was with Ms. Mazone. Ms. Mazone is a rock star. I thought Career Day went a little bit differently. I thought it was definitely more organized. And so a great big thank you to Ms. Siniglio and all the Career Center staff. They do an amazing job. Let's see. I want to wish all the winter sports good luck. I will be at many of those games. And then I just had a question through the chair to Mr. Dreszek. One of the things I think that we're going to have to keep an eye on is the fact that last year, they said our ECS cost-sharing grant was too much, or too low, or we were getting too much, so they weren't going to cut it. And I guess my concern is, was there a possibility it had to do, the figure was off because it had to do with the COVID-free lunches? Because nobody was submitting the forms for free and reduced lunch, because during COVID, everybody was getting free lunch?
You mean the free lunch numbers?
Yeah, that go into the ECS cost-sharing grant? Okay. So I think that's something, as a board, we should, we would want to keep an eye on with our state legislators to see what's going on with that ECS cost-sharing grant for next year, along with the Alliance grant. I think that hearing that our ECS cost-sharing grant, we were getting paid too much, was interesting to me. That's something we should keep an eye on. And then, Mr. Coburn, I just wanted to mention a couple of things, and in the spirit of moving forward, if you have any questions, I didn't know if you want to discuss the masks more in detail again. We did end up getting legal opinion, not even just the board, the last time, the board previously, about what we could do as a board to remove the masks beyond the executive order. So that information is available to you, because as we were told, that it could be a felony if we did not abide by the executive order. Also, we did talk about in great detail the pizza assignment in Leadership. So I believe your leadership will have more information for you based on that. So I hope everybody had a nice and safe Thanksgiving, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Mrs. Kuschman?
At our last meeting, we had the honor of having the Enfield High Honors Chorus here, and I just neglected to offer my thanks to Evan, to Sandhya, to Kyra, and to Lucas. I really appreciate them coming and being here. Their beautiful, harmonious rendition of our National Anthem was a wonderful way for us to start this term and to open up our meeting. I really appreciate them being here. I did have an opportunity to attend the Crandall Family Engagement Day, and it was very well-attended. Parking went clear around the building. And I just wanted to offer thanks to Ms. Karen Sargalsky, affectionately, I believe, known as Gus to many who are close to her, for the vision to showcase all of these organizations to our community and really opening a door of opportunity for us to connect with them, for families to connect. I know that I've not only learned a lot about some new organizations, but learned a lot more about ones that I thought I was already pretty familiar with. So it was a really, a great opportunity. Through the chair to the superintendent, could I just, one of the things that Gabriella mentioned, or perhaps it was Ms. Senzic that mentioned it regarding her activities that she was involved in, and she mentioned the intervention block that she was tutoring. And I just, I hadn't heard of that and was curious to learn more about that. And that's all that...
Mr. Ryder?
Okay, good evening, everybody. Very excited to speak about next Friday, December 8, our sixth annual, as an entire district, as a town, including our partners at Smith Bussing, we'll be doing PJ Day for CCMC. This is something that we have done as a district very well. It's something that I've been a part of for 10 years, but as a district, this will be our sixth year working together. There are links up on enfieldpto.com. On each school's page, there's a link. It also has been shared through Mr. Barassa to everybody, so the links are available. Please check out enfieldpto.com if you'd like to make a donation. We're also accepting cash donations. It's an optional donation for a dollar for the privilege to wear your PJs. And why that's important is because we have students, we have former students, and we have students who have left us that spent time dealing with their cancers at CCMC. And we have students that are there now, and there are children that are there now that are our neighbors and our relatives, and they won't be spending Christmas at home this week, this next month, because they'll be at CCMC dealing with health issues. And anything we can do to help with research or help give our kids something fun to do on a Friday, we can accomplish both of these things next week on PJ Day. We just ask that you wear school-appropriate pajamas and no footy pajamas. We don't want anybody slipping in the halls. If you have footy pajamas, just throw your sneakers over the bottoms. So thank you for that. Also, December 1, this Friday, HMS and Eli Whitney's were doing a winter dance at Enfield High School. The links are on both HMS and Eli Whitney's page of enfieldpto.com. We had told everybody when we had initially had the sign-ups to come to the dance. One adult could come with each student, but we do have some space available. So if you are a student and you have not signed up yet, please let your parents know to sign you up. And we do have capacity that we could also have a second adult there with some of the students. So if you wanted to bring mom and dad, you may do so. So we look forward to seeing you this Friday. The only other thing that I wanted to mention was in regard to Reese Across America. I'll touch on that during our communications portion, because we, if we didn't all get a letter, we should have, and I wanted to let everybody know how to reach out to make sure that you're on the list for that. As board members, we're all invited to take part in that ceremony. And one clarification to the December 16 Friends of Rachel's Pancake Breakfast that our student rep mentioned earlier, it is 8:30 to 10:30. It is their 10th Annual Pancake Breakfast. It takes place at Enfield High School. The breakfast is free, but what they do is they collect food donations. They have raffles, and all the food donations benefit the Enfield Food Shelf. So we please encourage everybody to join us on Saturday, December 16, 8:30 to 10:30. And then from there, you can head to the Reese Across America Ceremony at noon on December 16. And I'll touch more on that in Communications. Thank you very much.
Mr. Trenniss?
First of all, for people who are out there that thinks there are going to be a lot of changes taking place on this board very quickly, change takes time. So as Phil pointed out, I guess we have to go through a lot of stuff on the Policy Committee, and it may take two, three meetings or four meetings before you see any changes that may come about. Secondly, I may or may not have been, said something that might be incorrect when I gave my speech when we were being sworn in, when I said the state of Connecticut has screwed Enfield out of monies that we were supposed to receive and told we would receive, especially since, since we became an Alliance District, which has only exacerbated our financial problems. Some things have come to light to me, and can we ask Chris a couple of questions? Is that all right through you?
Yeah, you can ask him. He might not have the answer for you this evening, but...
Were we told that we were going to be getting money from the state?
From the state? Yes.
We were. So would you still say, or like one of the speakers spoke today, that our reps dropped the ball as far as us not getting the monies?
The entire budget process was passed by the entire legislature, so I don't know what individual people voted or not voted for.
Okay. Other than that...
And that was communicated to me through the State Department of Education, not through the General Assembly.
Other than that, I think it's been a pretty productive first meeting. Thank you.
Okay. I'll just keep my comments really brief. I did go to Family Engagement Day at Prudence Crandall, but I went as a parent, and I think that they did a fantastic job over there. I had a great time doing math games with my daughter, and there was a ton of parents there. They do a great job over at Crandall with family engagement. So it's my hope that I get to see that kind of family engagement throughout our district. And yes, yesterday evening, we did have our first readers, first ceremony of the year. We had 66 students certified as first readers. About half that came. It was our smallest ceremony, but it was, it was really well-attended. There was lots of grandparents and extended family members there cheering their students on. We still have two more ceremonies this year. One's in March, and the other one is in June. So we're looking for many more kids. This is our 12th year at it, and we have certified 5,100 students. So those first first readers, I think they're either seniors now or just graduated, which is kind of cool. Then the only other thing that I was thinking about, because I had watched the last meeting when, like, here, I've seen the food shelf came in, and I had seen articles in different places, and I was wondering if we could keep an open dialogue with them regarding this, because I saw some ideas, and I ended up talking with Jean in Springfield, doesn't they send, I don't know what they're called, like backpack boxes home on Fridays with some other food things for the families? I don't know how feasible that is, because it would obviously take a lot of people to do, to do that, and, you know, and funds and donated items, but I would like to, if we could keep an open, you know, dialogue with them and see if that's something that's possible.
Can I, can I just add to that real quickly? The Eagle Academy started an in-building food shelf.
Oh.
And I think they're going to be like a pilot program, so that would work in perfectly to what you're talking about, because then if we could get an in-school food shelf for the kids in the schools, that would be a really great idea to meld together.
Yeah, and I've actually seen, I don't know if they, I don't know what their current shelf looks like in Enfield High, but I did read that other high schools did that, and they also had, like, you know, like toiletries and stuff like that that they could get to. Yeah. So that was pretty cool. So that's all I had. So I think we should move on so far. All right, number 10, unfinished business. Discussion and action, if any, regarding Enfield Mental Health and Wellness Committee. It was tabled on 9/12/23. I need a motion to place it back on the table to discuss. So can I have a show of hands of all those in favor to put it back on the table? Any...
Do we got to make the motion first?
Sorry.
So moved by Peter, second.
So moved by Peter and seconded by Mr. Ryder. Now can I have a show of hands? All right, so there's nine in favor and obviously none against. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Longi to give us an update.
Thank you, Chairwoman. As the liaison of the Policy Committee, I had a chance to take a look at your policy, Policy 9132. That's where Jean and Dr. Jerry were going to possibly look at creating a standing committee, and that's where the tabling started. It's a pretty laborious process to do that. You have another option, which I would highly suggest. I talked to Ms. Akri the other day. I had a chance to talk to Dr. Jerry a little bit right before the meeting. They seem to both be in an agreement on this. Through your policy, as a board, you're able to create special and advisory committees. That's not creating a standing committee. That doesn't have to be added to policy. That's actually board action. So my suggestion is that you keep this tabled, allow Dr. Jerry and Jean to create what they're looking to do, the purpose of their mental health committee, who they would like to see on the committee, and give that to you, Chairwoman. And then at that point, I would suggest it gets on another agenda where you take a formal vote to create that special committee. I think that's the quickest way to get this moving, or else we're going to see this tabled for another two, three months. So that, I would highly suggest that, but in the end, that's your decision. But that's all within your authority to do as a board. You're able to do that. I'll read it, just so everyone's clear how you do that. It said, "Should the need for a special and/or advisory committee arise, the chairperson of the Board of Education may create such a committee and shall appoint Board of Education members to serve as permanent and alternate members on any such committee. Said committee creation and membership appointments shall be subject to approval by a majority vote of the Board of Education." So that's, that's a pretty simple process. So again, I would recommend you continue to table it. Allow the two individuals who would like to create this committee to put together some descriptions of what goals you're going to accomplish, who you would like to see on the committee, and then at that point, Chairwoman, you would read that into record, and then a vote would be taken.
Okay. So can I have a motion to table this item again, so that Dr. Kalman and Ms. Akri can come up with a more formalized plan for the scope of their committee? Okay, motion made by Mrs. LeBlanc, seconded by Mrs. Pickett. So can I have a show of hands? There is nine in favor and thus none against. Okay. All right. Item 11, new business. Discussion and action regarding the education specifications for the Thomas G. Alcorn Roof Replacement Project.
Thank you, Chairwoman Riley. Welcome Town Event Field Deputy Director of Public Works, Fred Gerber, and Jack of all trades, John Dag, to discuss the ed specs for the Thomas Alcorn Roof Project. As you guys, for new board members, a lot of times we have building projects, roof replacements that originate through, like, Joint Facilities Committee, but ultimately, in order to get reimbursement from the state for the project, it has to be approved and signed off by the Board of Education, which we bring people that are much smarter than me to come explain this. So the next three items on your agenda are two items related to that, but I will turn it over to John and Fred.
All right, thank you. As part of the 2001 roof referendum, there were six school sites that were included in that, in eight phases. There were nine in total. As part of that, we have to have approved educational specifications that come from our architect on the project that was included in your board packet. This is brief narrative description of the project, and it's included with things such as the original town council resolutions approving the project, the funding source, which is that referendum, the enrollment projections, a cost estimate, a couple of forms from the state, and then a sketch of the project. And that goes in to get our project number to bid the project with the state of Connecticut. So are there any questions on the ed specifications that you received in your packet?
No, doesn't look like there are going to be any questions.
It's a relatively formal process. If you approve them, we would then just include the signed minutes with the approval to the state of Connecticut.
Sorry, I do have a question.
Oh, okay. My wonder is about the impact of these projects and our modernization plan. So for example, Hazard Memorial being on the list. If we do this project, take out any loans, whatever, does that impact kind of future plans for what we do with that building and the work of the K-5 Modernization Committee?
Sure. So this referendum has Parkman, HB Stowe, Alcorn, Crandall, ESS, and Annex. Anytime you have a school project, you're certifying in there that you plan to use that building for its use. So in this case, it's our central... So, in this case, it's our central office at Alcorn and ETLA. We're basically committing to that for 20 years. Otherwise, you could be liable for reimbursement of a portion of that. This project is a little bit lower reimbursement than other projects because they're only reimbursing for the central office, office space at 35%. And there's been no discussion for this particular project on moving central office as part of this one. It's a consideration.
Are we talking about just Agenda 10A then, or 11A? Sorry. I was moving down to where I see Hazardville on the list.
That'll be, that'll be next.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? No? Okay. So, I'm going to need a motion to approve the education specifications for the Thomas G. Alcorn Roof Replacement Project.
So, moved.
Motion by Dr. Kalman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ryder. Can I have a roll call vote?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. So, B on new business, approval of the Eli Whitney State Project, number 0490143, RR Roof Replacement Project as complete.
So, just a brief update on this. The roof, was this for, I'm sorry, was this Eli Whitney or?
Eli Whitney.
So, Eli Whitney roof was completed. CSG was the representative, the project manager for the roof, and they have submitted to the state. We were approved for our reimbursement. The project is complete. So, in order to close that out with the state, we need to have this one and the next one for Hazardville approved by the Board of Education. I will then give this to CSG, and they will submit it to the state. We can close out the project, and then the project will be complete. So, this is very much a formality. All the work has been complete. It is all done, but just the last step.
Cool. Does anybody have any questions?
So, Madam Chair, more of a comment. I know I reached out to you before the meeting just in regards to this. I think coming out of a public referendum, I think this would be something nice just to show the board and the public more of a visual of it. So, I kind of mentioned, you know, if there was pictures of the job, you know, normally when a contractor comes to your house, you kind of see the work right away. Coming in, being new to this board, obviously I hadn't seen the work. I know I went to referendum and needed to get updated. It is done. So, again, it's just more of a comment, but just something for these, when they come to the board, if the project's done, it's just perhaps a visual representation that, hey, this is what it looks like. So, again, the board and the taxpayers can see what the final product looks like to, you know, close out the expenditure.
All right.
Thanks. Anybody else?
I'm going to clarify, so I apologize. My question is obsolete. But how long do we have to use that building now as such, since we did use funds for both of those projects?
So, I am going to say this, and I'm going to preface it, that I, there could be things that can be taken care of, but I believe that when it is approved by the state to get reimbursement, it is a 20-year reimbursement on the loan.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve Eli Whitney State Project, number 0490143, RR Roof Replacement Project as complete?
So, moved.
Motion by Mr. Ryder?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Pickett. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Item C, approval of Hazardville Memorial State Project, number 0490144, RR Roof Replacement as complete. Go ahead. Same thing.
Basically, the same thing as Eli Whitney. All the work is complete, and again, the reimbursement was approved by the state, and we just have to close out the project.
Awesome. Any questions? No?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
When you're saying the 20-year loan, like the previous school, we have 20 years to pay it?
I do not know enough information to answer your question. I'm sorry. I can look into it and get you an answer, perhaps for Joint Facilities Committee, but I do not have enough information.
I'm just worried about the fact that are we going to get stuck like what we did with Nathan Hale in any way, shape, or form?
It's typically that the building will remain in that use for that period of time, and for every year that you are in there, there is an amortization schedule that that number would. So, if it's $100,000 roof, which obviously more than that, in 20 years, you know, in year 19, it'd be, you know, $1,000 less. There's an amortization schedule. But I think what Mr. Gerber is trying to say is there are different, there are other rules if the building's going to be reused for other things.
So, I know there are some people talking about building three new elementary schools, K-5 schools. If that were to pass in referendum, and that was to take place, and these buildings are no longer in use, once again.
That would all be part of the holistic plan that the Modernization Committee started. So, part of it throughout, and I'll leave that for those to speak about it, but part of that, that was part of the discussion for the big picture of what ultimately the town, the direction the town might to go in, not just where would we go, but also what would we do with the facilities left behind. And that, it has to be all-encompassing because of those reasons, that we may have, still owe some money on particular buildings. If we reuse them for another purpose, then you don't have to pay the funding back. So, it's really a holistic approach to doing this, not just knock those three down, build three new ones. It really has to be all-encompassing. I think it might be a good idea, if the committee is still on here, at a future meeting, maybe have that committee come back and update the new board as an entirety of the work they've done thus far and where they'd like to go.
Yeah, thank you.
But that's up to, obviously, the discretion of the chair.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the Hazardville Memorial State Project, number 0490144, RR Roof Replacement Project as complete?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ryder, seconded by Mrs. Pickett. Can I have a roll call vote? Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Item D, approval of the 2024 to '29 Head Start Baseline Federal Grant, SF 424B Submission Statement and Governing Board Approval Statement.
Thank you, Chairwoman Riley. In your packet, there's a letter from Jaclyn Valley, our Director of Stowe Early Learning Center, and essentially, as Enfield Head Start is a federal program, in order to apply for federal funding, that Enfield Head Start needs board approval to apply for the grants. All the information in the grant outline is in your packet. It would require board action to give us the authorization to apply for federal Head Start funding.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
So, Madam Chair, I had a question, and I guess this would probably be for the superintendents. We don't have a representative here. I noticed the budget seemed rather kind of abbreviated. Looking at the students, it does quantify that it's 102 children. The budget, though, seems just kind of, I don't want to use the word generic, but just generic, just personnel, you know, for example, $944,129. Were you able to elaborate? Is that, you know, one employee for that dollar amount? Is that 10 employees? Like, what is the sub break? You know, same thing with the other categories. I know for this budget and other budgets, I'd kind of like to see more of a, perhaps a line item version of it.
So, the budget that's in your packet comes from the office of Head Start. That's actually the federal form and the way that they have to apply for the grant. So, I don't have that information. I can tell you it's not one person. I don't know anybody who makes $900,000 here, but the reason that the format is in the way that it is in your packet is because it's a federal grant, and that's the way that we have to apply for it. We're also a grantee of Manchester Board of Education, so we're not actually the grantee for Head Start. We are a subdivision of the, Manchester is actually the grantee for Enfield, so we have to work in collaboration with Manchester Head Start and also the federal guidelines. And like with any grant, it's usually designated as to what the format for the application will be, which is actually, I think it's even referenced on the bottom, what the reference numbers are. That actually comes directly from the feds.
Anything else? No? Anybody else have any question? Okay. Amanda, Mrs. Pickett?
I would just like to say that I want to commend Jaclyn Valley and Stowe Early Learning Center and the staff of Head Start for the work that they do. Anybody who goes into Stowe and knows anything about the programming that we're doing in there, Head Start's the most robust model of preschool, offers a lot of supports and services, and actually something that when we think about the high needs of our district, really looking at how do we leverage and support this even more. So, I'm excited to see that we continue to support this.
All right. Anybody else? No? Okay. So, can I have a motion to approve the 2024-29 Head Start Baseline Federal Grant, SF 424B?
So, moved.
Moved by Mrs. Pickett, seconded by Mrs. LeBlanc, and a roll call vote. Bless you. Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. All right, so item number 12, Board Committee Reports. So, I am, before I let the everybody go, I'm just going to give an update on who's on what committee, at least there are three standing committees. So, for finance, Mr. Coburn is the chair, and Jean Akri is on there, and Dr. Kalman is the secretary, and we have two alternates, Janet Kushman and Tina LeBlanc. The Policy Standing Committee, Janet Kushman's the chair, Philip Coburn's on it, Scott Ryder's the secretary, Peter Genitis and Tina LeBlanc are alternates. And for the Curriculum Standing Committee, Jean Akri is the chair, Janet Kushman's on it, Amanda Pickett's the secretary, Peter Genitis and Dr. Kalman are the alternates. So, does the curriculum committee have an update for us?
First, the next meeting is December 21st.
December 21st, okay. And how about Finance Budget Committee? Do we have an update yet?
Nothing to report yet, Madam Chair.
All right. Does the Policy Committee have an update?
We haven't yet met as a new board, but we will be meeting next Tuesday, December 5th, as a special meeting at 5:00 PM. We will also, this is in addition to our regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, December 19th, which is at 5:30.
All right. Leadership, we are meeting on Thursday at 4:30, I believe. Do we have a pre-K-5 school modernization committee update? Anyone?
No update at this time.
All right. Joint Facilities Committee? I knew he was on that. Nothing yet.
I don't have the next date.
Yeah, I don't think we have the next date.
Okay.
I don't think we have the next date for that. And I think we have, you know, two new representatives, which are you and Peter. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And I haven't heard of any dates on that one yet either. JFK Building Committee?
Their next meeting is December 7th.
Okay. December 7th. All right. Joint Security Committee?
Will be meeting soon.
We're going to, already, we talked about mental health and wellness, and I don't think anybody else is on Enfield Culture and Arts.
I volunteered to take that, so I'll do that. But I don't have any information yet, so I'll get my information to the ECAC, and then I'll start getting included in their correspondence and meetings.
All right. Sounds good. Okay, so Agenda Item 13, Approval of Minutes, Regular BOE Meeting Minutes, October 24th, 2023. Can I have a?
So, moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Pickett?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. LeBlanc. Can I have a show of hands? All in favor? We've got eight, seven in favor.
I don't know how we can vote because we weren't even, huh?
You can abstain if you want to. If you read them, if you read them, you can.
Okay, I'll go yes then.
Okay. So, then we have eight. Yep, eight in favor and one abstention. Okay. Number 14, do we have approval of accounts and payroll this time? No? Okay. Number 15, Correspondence and Communications. Do we have anything?
Yep, just a couple quick things to mention. So, we were invited by CAAB, and I would encourage everybody to reach out to Kathy if you would like to go on December 6th. This is the CAAB New Board Member Orientation and Leadership Conference, Wednesday, December